The Leominster City Council Meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
This evening, we had misidentified on the calendar a hearing before the council that should have been an informational meeting, and that was our Communication Six. We called for one of the gentlemen on staff here to come down to give us the heads up on some information regarding the police station land acquisition process before we get to our meetings in order for the council to hear for the first time and also for them to be able to shotgun some questions at him, to prepare him for the meeting that they're going to come down the end of the month. He was not able to come down this evening at the last minute. He'll be collaborating with the entire staff and coming down, excuse me, coming down in our next regular scheduled meeting. It will be an information meeting. It is listed on the calendar this evening for the first time, so I would imagine the recommendation from the chair of that committee will go regular course. I just wanted to clarify that and apologize for you that came down here early tonight. Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, good.
Good evening. This is a hearing before the Leominster City Council. Petition 40-18 relative to amending Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Leominster zoning ordinance to include language regarding recreational marijuana facilities. Before I go to the, to the audience, are there any members of Legal Affairs that have any comments or questions at this time? Council Fritta? Council Bedanza? Are there any members of the city council that have any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, is there any member of the audience that wishes to approach the council in favor of this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to approach the council in favor of this petition? How you doing?
Joe Quinn, 391 Union Street, Leominster. It's been ample discussion, certainly statewide vote, voted cannabis, approved the ballot initiative, you know, it's legal in the, in the state. I think it was a prudent measure, measure for the council to take up regulating cannabis and where it can be sold, how it can be sold within the city of Leominster. I am in favor of this regulation, you know, primarily because, you know, what, what drives me to come here this evening is the, the money that the city will receive through the process of these businesses opening in the city can support the schools, can support this new police station, can support a new athletic field complex up at Leominster High School, amongst other things. I think it's a wise move to put regulations in place, so, you know, we're not delaying the process any longer. You know, though there's valid reasons to, you know, put together a moratorium to delay, to, you know, discuss further, I think there's been ample time, you know, provided since the law was enacted for discussion, for regulatory efforts to be put forward. I think, you know, what the city has is before the city council this evening is sufficient to get us started in this, this new process that we have. And of course, you know, when you look back many, many years ago, I'm sure your, your predecessors dealt with something very, very similar to this when prohibition ultimately was ended and, you know, alcohol sales, you know, went on and were started in the country. And so, there again, so I, I just would like to express my opinion on this, and I am in favor of this regulation, this new ordinance for zoning, 40-18. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Is there any other member of the audience who wishes to address the council in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council in opposition to this petition? Second time, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council in opposition to this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, are there any councilors that have any questions or comments? Mr. President, I'll, anything?
Members of my comments.
Okay, I'll request that the public hearing be closed.
Hearing's closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum will begin at 7:15. We're going to open the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speech, each, excuse me, each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, if clarification is necessary, I'd be glad to do that. The first scheduled speaker is Joe Quinn.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Joseph Quinn, 391 Union Street here in Leominster. There again, I've been before you already regarding this. I do support 40-18, the recreational marijuana zoning ordinance that's before you this evening. I also support C-06, the police station land acquisition funding that's being discussed this evening, also 05-19, the petition adding veterans' parking spots throughout the public lots throughout the city. I think those are all, you know, very, very positive petitions, and I support them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary Zimmerman.
Gary Zimmerman, 47, Lynnhaven Road. I sent an email to the councilors last week, I think it was, and the mayor, C-06 on the police station. I watched the hearing in June from the fire chief and talking about the, the conditions of the, the fire station, so I got to thinking, and just to give the public an idea of, of what I sent to the council, was that maybe joining the fire station and the police station together and call it a public safety building or whatever it is, to possibly save millions of dollars on building to building. So, that's what I sent towards the council. But in the same time too, yesterday, I went through the GIS database on this purchase of these land, and I found it kind of interesting, so I'm just going to run through the numbers and try to keep them simplistic. 106 Central Street is valued at $140,000, $150,000. 112 valued the same thing. They're all valued pretty much at the same valuation according to the GIS database. I did find it kind of interesting on some of the numbers in the land with the dollar per year per square foot or per thousand square foot for the assessed database, because the numbers vary. But overall, they're all zone BB, they're all valued basically at the same price, but according to the article in the Sentinel, they're paying roughly $220,000 for 106, which is a three-family that they're demoing. On 112, they're paying about $220,000. 124, they're paying a million dollars for it. So I couldn't understand how they're all valued at the same range, but then the cost of that one acre of land, basically, is now valued at four or five times the value of the assessment value. So again, I don't understand the assessment. I'm going to go to the assessors' office this week and try to get a little more explanation on it, but I found it very interesting that you'd be paying a million dollars for something that's valued at $158,000, and its, its use is manufacturing. 112 uses mixed juice, and a three-family is the use for the, the 106 property. So I just found it very strange on the assessment value. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick McCarty.
Good evening. Patrick McCarty, 42, Jungle Road, Leominster. Here again this evening to speak in favor of petition 85-18, which is an easement that we've requested on behalf of one of our clients for a project on Cottage Street. We submitted this back in June, and it was given regular course, and then unfortunately there weren't enough members here. Understandably, it happens for the first meeting, it was given regular course, then I understood we were waiting for recommendations on the second time. So we're here tonight really hoping that the council can move to a vote. They are trying to do the project in this construction season, so the applicant's getting anxious that if it gets pushed out much further, he's going to lose his window opportunity to file for a building permit, get site work going and all that before the weather closes in. It's scary to think, but it's a reality of construction in New England that went to will be here before we all like it. So hopefully, if we're still waiting for recommendations, now that it's been two months, we can just presume that if they had something against it, they would have let us know in the last 60 days, and if they hadn't said anything, then let's just assume that they're in favor and hopefully move that along. And I appreciate the council's consideration on that. Thank you very much in advance. The second item I'd like to speak in favor of is C-07, which is the mayor's resolution for continuing marketing of the, of the landfill. I'm sorry, I misread that as the Jungle Road transfer station, because I did see activities happening down there, so I apologize, I was thinking one and not the other. So I guess just the first one, please, and thank you, and have a great evening.
That's been hovering around also.
Yeah, I hope so. I see they tore down the building, which is a great sign, and, you know, for those of us on Jungle Road who everybody thinks it ends at Walmart, but there are more of us down there, we'd love to see something happen with that site eventually. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Edward J. Bartlett, Jr. I'm the CFO of Middlesex Integrative Medicine at 25 Mohawk Drive. Since marijuana's on the agenda tonight, we thought we'd be paying attention to it. As you know, we live in Article 18, and just even update of where we are, we obtained the building permit after the special permit was issued and entered into host agreement with the mayor, and we began construction of the cultivation site at Mohawk Drive. We anticipate that it would be up and running by early next year, meaning product will be, will be delivered. And as the industry undergoes changes with medical and recreational marijuana, where, you know, we, we applied for cultivation site in Leominster, but if the opportunity comes up that there's more sites available for retail sales, whether recreational or medical, Middlesex would be interested in pursuing that as well, and just want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I deviated a little bit. You weren't speaking specifically on any item on the agenda tonight, just in general?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Sir, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Junior Acosta, 59 Manchester Street, apartment number three. This is the first time I'm attending a city council meeting.
Thank you for being here.
No problem. Excited to be here, excited to meet all of you. I just want to quickly talk about the zoning ordinance for marijuana, and I just want to say that I'm in favor, and I think that'll be a positive, and I think it'll actually help resolve a lot of the fears that many people have towards it, and I hope that the council is seriously considered the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you all very much for addressing the council. Council, you have an interview.
We have an appointment interview this evening with Vicente Estrella Reyes for the appointment to auxiliary officer. Is Vicente here?
Yes.
Oh, come around. Thank you for coming. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So Vicente, I am Gail Feckley. I'm the Chair of Ways and Means Committee, and Claire Fritta is our clerk, and Council Dombrowski is the third member. And we've just had you here because the mayor has sent your name down as an appointment to auxiliary officer. And just so that the public gets a chance to get to know you, and we get a chance to get to know you, you'll be out there in the community, and it's important that people, you know, get familiar with you, and the more that you're out there, the more you will, you know, you'll, you'll be learning about the community and people will be learning about you. But this is the first, the first stop. So I just want to just ask you a few questions, but have you start with a little bit of your background, why you're interested in being an auxiliary officer for the city of Leominster, and what you feel as though you can contribute to that role?
First of all, I want to thank you, the councilors, for the invitation to allow me to introduce myself. I'm currently working for Rince, their armed ser, car services.
Stay on.
Good. I am a student at Mount Wachusett Community College, taking courses of criminal justice. I recently graduated from the Boilstone Reserve Police Academy. I've been living in Leominster for the last 10 years of my life. My family resides here as well. I'm a property owner here in Leominster, and I'm looking to get back to my community, and I feel this is a great, a great way to, to get back to the city of Leominster.
And you see this as possibly something that would, you know, encourage your career in, in police work?
Of course.
As you go along?
I would like to be a full-time police officer, and this will help me with my career, my future career.
Yeah. Okay, great. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council Fritta, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Council Dombrowski.
No, just thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Any other councilors have any questions or comments? Vicente?
Just thank you for your willingness to get involved with that organization. It's a great organization. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming down, as we said, we, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Okay. Thank you very much, because we just want, like I said, to get to know you, and you could get to know us, and, you know, feel a bit more comfortable, and, you know, hopefully, you know, you'll enjoy what you're doing in the good weather and the bad, right? That's part of it. So I, I think that you obviously have the background for it, and that you'll be a good fit, and so we really appreciate your, your willingness to, to work with, for the city.
Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to ask the president to move up the appointment so that you can stay if you'd like to see, see the vote, okay?
I'll see.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the regular scheduled city council meeting is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now beginning with a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Council Fritta.
Yes.
Council Dombrowski.
Present.
What are you thinking of?
I don't know.
Council Schalefo Zephyr.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Bedanza.
Present.
Council Adinger.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Council David Cormier.
Present.
All nine members are present. Thank you very much. We'll go to the vice president. Do we have any minutes to accept this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11th, 2018. I have reviewed them and find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. Any, has anyone reviewed them? Are there any questions? Okay, so moved. While we're talking about minutes, did you all get a copy of the draft of the new presentation of minutes?
Mm-hmm.
We thought this would be a little more user-friendly if you have to print it out at home, and also for the public, so TD, thank you for working on that with the city clerk, we appreciate it. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to communications from the mayor, beginning with C-06.
Thank you, Council President. C-06, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella. One, relative to the acquisition of three parcels of land, 106 Central Street, 112 Central Street, and 124 Central Street. Two, also relative to the appropriation of $2 million for the cost of the foregoing acquisition and development of the property for police station purposes. Three, relative to any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of projects cost approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Communication six is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe the hearing, the informational hearings scheduled for two weeks from today. We'd ask for regular course with referrals from the police department, the comptroller, and the treasurer, and I'll ask you to pull my committee if they'd like any additional referrals.
You're the floor to the clerk.
No, but I need to make a comment, although it's not, doesn't matter for tonight, but I will be abstaining on 112 Central Street. I have a possible conflict.
Okay. All right. Duly noted. So your reflection will not include that whatsoever. Thank you. Anything else? Any other referrals?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you. Third member?
No other referrals.
I'll say thank you. Councils heard, further time, excuse me, regular course on Communication six with referral to the police department, comptroller, treasurer. It will be an informational meeting, 6:30?
Yes.
It's scheduled right now for 6:30 at our next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. We now move on to Communication seven, madam.
Thank you, Council President. Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, a resolution supporting the continued marketing of the Leominster landfill.
Communication seven is referred to the chairperson of city property.
Thank you, Mr. President. This communication is in essence the same as the communication C-53, which was tabled in June, at the end of June, and I'm just wondering if, I'm looking for some area, should we treat this separately, or do we go back to this?
Yes, please.
Go back to the original table resolution?
So my, my suggestion, Mr. Chair, is that this is the one that's before us at this moment, so we'll deal with this one specifically.
Okay.
There may be some referrals that were made back then that may be applicable for this one, we can research that for you.
Well, I have the referrals, I have it here, but, you know, we, we have all the referrals in, in place.
Okay.
That's why, anyway, with that, that information, I would recommend that we approve this?
Well, for a time on the calendar, regular course.
Do we need to?
Yes.
Okay, regular course then.
Okay, thank you. Any referrals on that, or you all set?
I think we, we have all the referrals we needed.
Okay, very good. Councils heard the recommendation for regular course on Communication seven. We now move on to page three. We have some appointments.
Thank you. Christopher Ryan, planning director, on a temporary basis for 60 days until the office can be filled by a permanent appointment.
This position is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive a letter from the mayor indicating that he has designated Christopher Ryan to perform the duties of the planning director on a temporary basis for 60 days. So at this point, I think as a matter of introduction, I would like to invite Mr. Ryan down to the city council chambers at the next meeting, so that we can be introduced to him and vice versa, and also if we could be supplied with a copy of his resume, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Excellent idea. So regular course on the Ways and Means appointee, Mr. Ryan, and we're requesting the mayor to submit to the Ways and Means chair and also the council, the, the resume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And do you have a time you want him to come down for the next meeting?
Probably around the, the same time that we interview on 7:20 usually works.
Okay, good, thank you. And we have a second one.
Preya Patel, cultural commission, term to expire 4/15/2021.
This candidate again is referred to the chairperson of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President, this is first time on the calendar, so I would like to ask the clerk to invite Preya Patel down to the, the council at the next meeting for an interview.
Okay, very good. Resume or anything on that one?
No, not necessary.
Okay, all right, fine. So Mr. Patel's been given regular course this evening with an interview to take place before the next scheduled city council meeting. Thank you. We now have some communications from the mayor, beginning with C-08.
C-08, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $4 million to the stabilization fund, same amount to be transferred from the overlay surplus account.
Communication A is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication eight. Communication nine.
Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $323,000 to the police department capital outlay expense, expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication nine again is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication nine. Communication ten.
Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative the, to the appropriation of $38,000 to the building department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication ten is again referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar situation, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication ten. Communication eleven.
Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $135,000 to the sanitation and drainage expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication eleven is referred to the chairman of finance.
Again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication eleven's been given regular course. There are no communications under suspension rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'll now move on to petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with petition 5-19.
Claire M. Fritta, request two veterans-only parking spots in all of the public lots in the city of Leominster, signs to read, veteran parking only, this spot is reserved for those who have served.
5-19 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 5-19, first time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the director of veteran services in the police department, and given that involves parking, I think it's probably appropriate for a referral to the disability commission as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 5-19 has been given regular course with referral to the veterans' director, the police department, and also the disability commission. Thank you. 6-19, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. Petition for junk and secondhand dealers license, little man clothing and accessories, business owner, Charity Sanders.
6-19 is referred to the chairperson of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. I would ask for a referral from the police department and the treasurer's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 6-19 has been given regular course with referral to the police department and the treasurer's office. We'll now move on to page four. We now have matters before the city council. We're going to do the financial report first, and then we'll get right to Ways and Means, all right? Actually, let's go to Ways and Means first, okay?
Okay.
So we have an appointment coming up on page, let's see what page is that, where are we? Page six? Okay, so if we can flip to page six. We're trying to save paper with the new agenda, just have to do a little more flipping, that's all. Okay. We're dealing with Mr. Vicente. Madam Chair, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This is a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Vicente Estrella Reyes to the position of auxiliary officer, term to expire July 17th, 2019. And we had Mr. Estrella Reyes down here this evening, and he is a student at Mount Wachusett, he has attended academy. He is very interested in, in serving the city of Leominster in this capacity. He's interested in at some point becoming a full-time police officer, so certainly this would this would be a great resume builder. We were very pleased to interview him. He seems like he has the determination of somebody that could do this job, and when if, when he does become appointed, he will need to make an oath that he would faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office according to the law and the best of his abilities, and I feel as though he can. So my recommendation would be to grant the appointment of Mr. Vicente Estrella Reyes. And I will go to my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Frida.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel Dobrowski.
I agree.
Thank you. Please qualify your vote for your recommendation.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a majority approval to grant the appointment of Vicente Estrella Reyes to the position of auxiliary officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, the recommendation for confirmation on the applicant or candidate, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Odinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Shalif Ozefar.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a nine to nothing vote, the confirmation is taking place. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you. You're going to see the assistant clerk, she's going to swear you in before you leave. Save you a trip tomorrow. Okay, we're now on back to page four. We have the city of Lomondster financial report. Is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year with a balance in the stabilization account of $15,106,97. There's a pending appropriation to transfer to the stabilization account from the overlay account, the sum of $4 million. There are three pending appropriations that are on the calendar for the first time this evening, totaling $496,000. If all of those are approved, the resulting balance in the stabilization account will be $18,604,697.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now begin with communication three, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-3, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $100,000 be made to the Gallagher Building Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. This is done annually, the revolving fund, of course, receives the rents from the building, principally the trial court department, and the monies are transferred to the expense account. The expense account is accessed for general maintenance of the building, heat, electrical charges, emergency repairs, and the like. As I said, we do this each year. It would be my recommendation to grant C-3. I'll check with members of my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel David Cormier.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
Yes, Mr. President, unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-3.
Counselors heard that recommendation read to grant communication three. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $100,000 be transferred to the Gallagher Building Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move to communication four, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-4, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella, relative to the appropriation of $75,000 to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. This money pays for, again, it comes from the same revolving fund that receives the rents, and this money pays for the craftsman salary, which is shared between the Gallagher Building and City Hall, as well as overtime and project emergencies. Broken down $51,235 for the craftsmen and the overtime and project emergencies, $23,765 for a total of $75,000. It would be my position to grant C-4, and I'll ask you to check with members of my committee, please.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel David Cormier.
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
Yes, Mr. President, unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-4.
Counselors heard that recommendation to grant communication four. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, ordered that the sum of $75,000 be appropriated to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to communication five, which we accepted last meeting under suspension of rules. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-5, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, authorize the city of Lomondster to pursue $26,580 through the United States Department of Justice, Justice Assistant Grant Program. As the president pointed out, this came to us as a suspension of the rules last meeting. This has a tight timeframe, and thus the suspension of the rules. And the concept here is that the city is applying for monies, $26,580, through this program, and it requires a vote of the City Council so that the grant can be submitted. It would be my recommendation to grant C-5. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Third member, Counsel David Cormier.
I also agree.
Please qualify, Mr. Chairman.
The unanimous recommendation of finance, Mr. President, is to grant C-5.
Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant communication five. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalif Ozefar.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Odinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication is granted. We'll now move on to legal affairs? Okay, good. We have 2-3, Mr. Chairman, thank you and your committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll now move on to legal affairs, beginning with 2-19. I'll yield the floor to the chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mr. President. Petition 2-19, Gail P. Feckley, request to amend Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning, Article 1, Section 22-4, definitions, yard sale by adding application and permitting requirements for all yard sales. We did get a couple of referrals back. We have a referral from the Building Commissioner dated August 7th, 2018. This is a letter addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am receipt of a communication dated July 26, 2018, requesting my recommendation on petition 2-19 to amend Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances, ordinances entitled zoning, Article 1, Section 22-4, definitions, yard sale by adding application and permitting requirements for all yard sales. I am in favor of this petition as we continue to have several people cause safety issues during yard sales. Requiring an application and permitting process will help prevent any safety concerns and issues. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. We also received a recommendation from the interim Chief of Police, Michael Goldman. This is dated August 7th, 2018. Dear City Clerk Huffman, in reference to 2-19 referred to me by the Legal Affairs Committee, I on behalf of the Lomondster Police support this amendment. I contacted Counsel Feckley and asked her to offer this amendment. Currently, the Building Department handles yard sales. As yard sales are held on the weekend, when City Hall is closed, I find it more appropriate that the Police Department have jurisdiction. Further, I have found that traffic, tracking offenders has been problematic. By requiring a license, the Police Department can attach the yard sale rules to the permit, and we will generate a log to track them. The amendment as proposed will allow the city to get better control. The intent is not to discourage the infrequent neighborhood yard sale, but to eliminate the unlicensed flea markets, which are clearly being operated under the guise of yard sales. Sincerely, Michael Goldman, interim Chief of Police. We also have a recommendation from David LaPlante, the Treasurer Collector for the city of Lomondster, dated July 27, 2018. This is addressed to myself. Dear Counselor Dobrowski, in reference to petition 2-19, I have no objection to the city changing city ordinance, Section 22-4, with the proposed update adding application and permitting requirements for all yard sales. Please let me know if you have any other questions. Sincerely, David R. LaPlante, Treasurer Collector. I believe we are awaiting recommendations from the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. At this point, my, my personal recommendation would be to give this further time. I'd also ask later on, Mr. President, that we take a vote. I'd like to bring the Building Inspector down and the Police Chief, the interim Police Chief, for a subcommittee meeting.
Good.
You know, so that we can get to the enforcement of this and
Okay.
the need for police, police control. And I'd ask you to poll my committee on the further time recommendation.
Okay, you have the floor to the clerk.
I agree with you.
Third member?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, good. Qualify, please.
Unanimous recommendation is for further time and to take a vote later on to bring the interim Police Chief and the Building Inspector down for a subcommittee meeting.
Okay, I have one question for your committee.
Sure.
How do we end up with a referral to the ZBA?
If they don't, if, if someone doesn't like what the Building Inspector does, they have a right to appeal to the ZBA. And right now
On a yard sale permit?
I think on any type of action.
Okay.
Any type of enforcement action.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Counselors heard the recommendation for further time, correct?
Correct.
And so we're going to vote on the, we'll vote on the further time, but at the same time, we will vote to bring down, you want to establish the meeting at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I think at the end of the meeting is more
Okay, then we'll take a vote at that point for the people you want coming down to that.
Yep.
Okay, good. Counselors heard the recommendation for further time on 2-19, are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. 3-19, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 3-19, Claire M. Frida, request to adopt a temporary moratorium regarding recreational marijuana in the city of Lomondster, including definition and purpose. We have some recommendations back, we have two back, I'll read them into the record. There's a recommendation from Peter Nile, the Building Commissioner, August 7th, 2018. This is addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated July 26, 2018, requesting my recommendation on petition 3-19 to adopt a temporary moratorium regarding recreational marijuana in the city of Lomondster, including definition and purpose. I am in favor of this petition. My opinion is that a moratorium would be helpful to give the city time to have proper ordinances in place. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. We also have a recommendation from the interim Police Chief, Michael Goldman. This is also dated August 7th, 2018. This is addressed to the City Clerk. Dear City Clerk Huffman, in reference to communication 3-19 referred to me by the Legal Affairs Committee, recreational marijuana moratorium, this department's stance on this issue has not changed. I reiterate the Lomondster Police Department's support of this petition. Careful and deliberate discussion must be had on how to best, on how best to protect children in the larger community from any harmful impact of this misguided legalization law. A moratorium is a responsible and reasonable approach. Sincerely, Michael Goldman, interim chief. We are, we have pending referrals from the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. However, I believe they both issued favorable recommendations relative to the legislation that's pending later on tonight, so I'm not quite sure we would need to hear, to get those recommendations, but I'll, I'll leave that up to my committee's decision. My personal opinion is we have a matter on for second reading of an ordinance tonight relative to this exact issue, so I would not be in favor of a temporary moratorium. And I'd ask you to poll my committee, which includes Counsel Frida, who is the drafter of this petition.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Frida.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I don't think we should be mixing the two if the, whatever the other response is, has nothing to do with this one. I mean, it does, but it doesn't. We're going to wait for other things. I think we can wait for a response on this one as well. It's also important to note, because we keep, mentioned that a couple of times, is how this moratorium request got on the agenda again. We were dealing with the ordinance, recreational marijuana, and at a regularly scheduled meeting, this council voted not enough to support the ordinance. My immediate reaction the following day, because I think we were all very surprised, my immediate reaction the following day was to submit this petition for a moratorium while we were figuring out what was going on. That did, we, a special meeting was called. I asked to have this on the agenda that night so that that could be on at the same time as the ordinance was discussed, and that didn't happen. So now it appears that it's backwards, which it was not, because this was on the agenda, this should have been on the agenda in time. This has been such a different way of doing business on this council than I've ever seen, and that's my opinion. When the vote didn't go as expected, we had a request for a special meeting. This was not an emergency, the state's not even ready yet. We still see that the state's not ready yet, there are no testing labs ready. We have the Chief of Police talking about dangers to the kids. We all know that's an issue. We all get excited because we got $150,000 grant for kids to, to encourage them to stop smoking. We say, yeah, they're 21 to smoke, and we're, then we get the same response that we've got high school kids that are vaping. Well, they're not 21, so they're getting in the hands of some, some kids. We have to have that same concern about our children. Not looking to ban this, I'm looking to take our time. Why should we jeopardize our community? Why should we not do it the right way? Get the concerns of everybody. We all come to this table with opinions from our constituency. Whether it's all one way or another, we're bringing the feelings of our constituents to this table. And I had some very strong support that asked me to do this. I find it a little insulting that we had called a special meeting. I was at a function that night because it was an off week, and I won't speak for her, but Counsel Feckley just came back from vacation that night, and I know Counsel Shalif Ozefar wasn't able to make it. Because one council was going on vacation on a regular scheduled night, we changed the meeting. So now the votes obviously changed, so this is a little bit backwards in the way it's done. I just feel like this was not done the right way. There was no reason to rush this. We have concerns about our kids, and every day there's a new issue coming up. It's not rocket science. I mean, every real estate magazine and, and law magazine that we're getting, there's another new one about landlords being concerned with the law saying that somebody can grow pot in their apartment, but if they have a federally backed mortgage and their house burns down because of that, they don't have their insurance coverage. So, and that's just something brand new that they're all trying to figure out. So there are a lot of issues. We should be sitting around the table talking about these before we go. I'm not saying that the ordinance is bad. I'm not saying that it wouldn't fit in the community. I'm saying that we're going too fast with it. People can say we dragged our feet, that's fine. Let them say that. The state, people approved it, voters approved it on a state level. The state, people approved it, the voters approved it on the state level. I, I don't need to say again that Leominster was very close, and if they did it again tomorrow, I think it'd be a different outcome, because people were, were looking to the state, but not necessarily their own community. This vote might not make it, but you know what? I had a responsibility to bring this to the table for the people that asked me to do this. And I did that, and I'm disappointed in the way this went and the way this has appeared. And I don't think it should have been done that way. That's just my opinion, and, um, I would strongly suggest that we give this further time.
Thank you. What's that? I yield the floor to the third member, Counsel Bonanza.
I'm opposed to the position.
Okay. I yield the floor to the chairman for qualification.
Uh, the recommendation by a majority of the Legal Affairs Committee would be to deny petition three dash nineteen.
Counselor, the recommendation to deny three dash nineteen. Are there any further comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Schellefozefer.
Thank you very much. Um, I think, uh, my opinion would be to give this further time. I think because we are waiting for Planning Board, um, recommendation, we are waiting for ZBA recommendation, and I think in order to be consistent, in order to be fair, as we were for the prior petition, I don't see any harm in waiting for both of those referrals.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Dubrowski?
I, I, I normally would, would agree with that. Um, what's wrong with my chair? I normally would agree with the, uh, with that position, but I think there's some, um, procedural matters that, that perhaps are not, have not been accurately displayed. The, the, the petition that we're, we're talking about that's related to this matter is, uh, which one is it here? Forty eighteen. Thank you very much. This petition forty eighteen, which was, which was approved, um, by a, a, a majority, a super majority of the council with everyone present. And then it went to regular course. And when it went to regular course, uh, not regular course, when it went to first reading of the ordinance, I believe only seven of the nine councils were present, and at that time is when, um, the decision was, there was not enough votes to carry it forward. So what occurred then was an, an attempt to try to have the full council be present to vote on an important issue, not, not to have it, um, go down against the will of the full council on a first reading of an ordinance, which for the most part, um, is, is relegated not to the substance of the ordinance, but really to, you know, does this read well? Does this make sense? Did the city solicitor approve it? The, the merits of it had been decided. And I, and I think that that's what happened, in my opinion. And I was not able to make it at that first reading of the ordinance, um, because I had a, a personal issue with a, with, um, with, with an old friend who, whose child was sick. But, um, you know, so I, so I was disappointed that I could not participate in that vote, and I was happy that we were able to reconsider that with a full member, with a full council. So I think that, um, waiting for these other referrals, normally I would, I would agree with that, but the reality is that, um, this is a moratorium to stop something that has reached the second reading of the ordinance, um, chapter, and the referrals we're waiting for are, um, referrals from entities that were in favor of the recreational component of petition forty eighteen. So, you know, in my opinion, it's, uh, it's almost, um, it's, it's, it's almost a mood issue. I'd also note that the Building Inspector, who indicated that he's in favor of the moratorium, was also in favor of the recreational, uh, petition forty eighteen. So he seems to be, um, confused. But I don't have any other comments other than that. I just, I just felt that it was important to set that straight.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Frida?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the chair, to the, my colleague on the Legal Affairs Committee. Procedurally, I think you're right. If the full council wasn't here, would, did that necessitate having a special meeting? Why would you just not wait till the next regular meeting? This wasn't something, it was an emergency. So if it, if there was a regular, we had a meeting, the vote didn't go the way everybody thought, people were missing, that, that sometimes happens. So we call a special meeting? Why would we not have just waited till the next regularly scheduled meeting had the vote? Because we knew people were gonna be on vacation? I mean, let's, let's, let's say it like it happened. I mean, this is not, this is not the way it should have gone. I don't have a problem losing a vote down here, or, or saying, hey, you know, I tried my best, we lost. But I really do have a problem losing it the way it was lost, if that's gonna be the case. And you talk about the Building Inspector. The Building, there wasn't the option, because this didn't get on the agenda so that there would be the two items at the same time. So people that were asked for a referral, when you want to talk about the, the ordinance, they're looking at one thing, not knowing that there's a moratorium option on the agenda. So there's a lot of things that we disagree on that way. And as a member of Legal Affairs, we give further time to anything that doesn't have a referral back. And I'm a little disappointed that that wouldn't, same courtesy wouldn't be afforded.
Counsel Dubrowski, would you like to respond?
I, I would. I, I mean, just in the spirit of telling it the way it is, I wasn't here at the first reading of the ordinance meeting. The clerk of Legal Affairs was in charge, and further time was not requested. It was pushed through to a vote with two members not present. That's what happened. I'm not gonna say anything else about that, except that the Building Inspector's the Building Inspector. If he thinks there should be a moratorium, he, that's, that should be his opinion. We don't have to have it on the agenda. I mean, he's the zoning enforcement officer for crying out loud. So, um, there've been moratoriums down here. One that, one that I did support. This particular one, um, I don't think at this point in time, improvements can be made on the ordinance in question. I think it's a lot of work to put an ordinance together. I think that moratorium expires in what, three months?
December.
December?
Two nineteen, yes.
Two nineteen?
July, July two nineteen, isn't it?
Um, and if there are gonna be changes made or necessitated, then we, we have the ability to do that. But I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance, and, um, again, we're talking about zoning. A lot of the issues that are being raised down here were already decided, whether you like it or you don't like it. We're talking about zoning, we're talking about where this is going to go.
Counsel Schellefozefer, you had the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, just for the record, I do wanna make note that I was not here for that special meeting. So the last vote, and then also the subsequent regular meeting. So I just wanted to be on the record. So it was not a vote of the full council, because I was not present for either one of those last votes. I could not attend either.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the floor, questions? Counsel Bonanza?
Just, just to point out for the record, this isn't the first time we've encountered a petition for a marijuana, uh, moratorium. This would be number three. So it's not like this hasn't been kicked around for a while. And I'll reserve the rest of my comments when we get to forty eighteen.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Counselor, the recommendation to deny petition three dash nineteen. This will require a two-thirds vote in order to pass it in the positive. So the recommendation again is for, uh, deny. We'll begin with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel Adinger?
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza?
Yay.
Counsel Feckley?
Nay.
Counsel Schellefozefer?
Nay.
Counsel Dubrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Nay.
I should record a yay by a vote of six to three. The petition is denied. We'll now move on to four dash nineteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition four dash nineteen, Lieutenant Richard J. Kinney, replace city ordinance section twenty dash ten. Parades, processions, processions and assemblies with the attached proposed section twenty dash ten, parades slash races. We have a few referrals back. We have a referral from the, um, police, the fire chief, dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. This is addressed to the city clerk. Dear Ms. Huffman, pursuant to your request for a recommendation on the above captioned petition, please be advised that I am in favor of the proposed replacement of section twenty dash ten of the ordinance entitled, "Parades Slash Races." Please contact this office if you have any questions. And that sincerely, Robert A. Sidlo, the second chief of department. We also have a referral back from the DPW Director, dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. This is also addressed to the city clerk. Dear Caitlin, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed this petition and offers the following comments. The DPW approves the petition as submitted. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, the DPW Director. We also have a recommendation, um, from the interim chief of police. This is dated August seventh, two thousand eighteen. Dear City Clerk Huffman, in reference to oh-four nineteen, parades referred to me by the Legal Affairs Committee, I on behalf of the Leominster Police Department support this petition. This petition was written by Lieutenant Kinney at my direction to address the increasing rise in five K road races. There has been an incredible proliferation of these races. There are no current guidelines for them, and therefore usually operate without public safety input. Infrequently, an organizer will contact my office, and we will assist them in operating a safe race. Without oversight, there is the potential for danger to the participants and public. Frequently, the police department is notified at the last moment, and public safety resources must be diverted to ensure a safe event. This not only compromises the rest of the city, but comes at a financial cost to the taxpayers. This petition is an attempt to regulate these increasingly frequent events in a manner as fair and responsible as possible. And, um, I don't believe there is a pending referral, uh, from the mayor's office. My position is that referral is probably not necessary. I'd, I'd like to commend the, uh, the Police Chief. I, I did review the ordinance they submitted. I thought it was well-written, um, and I think it's a good idea. So I personally am in favor of petition four nineteen, um, and I don't, I don't think we need a referral from the mayor on this.
What's that?
Yep.
Thank you. Are, are you have the floor to the clerk?
I agree.
Third member?
Yeah, notably, it doesn't apply to governmental agencies, so I think that underscores what you're suggesting regarding the mayor, so I'd be in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please qualify your recommendation.
I will. I think I actually included the mayor tongue-in-cheek, 'cause I know he, I know he runs on occasion. But, uh, the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant petition four dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, that recommendation right to grant four dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Frida?
Just a comment that we're gonna need all the safety we can get after recreational marijuana is in the city of Leominster.
I'm telling you. I don't disagree with that at all. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions on the floor? Okay. All those in favor of passing four dash nineteen, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, four dash nineteen is granted by a vote of nine to nothing. Thank you. We'll now move on to eighty-four dash eighteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
Uh, yes, I am, Mr. President. Petition eighty-four dash eighteen, interim chief Michael D. Goldman, amend chapter ten of the Leominster Peddler's License as authorized by Master of Law, Chapter Six, Section one seventy-two B and a half. We do have some, uh, recommendations. Let me just make sure I've got them all. Okay, there is a recommendation from the, initially from the police, the interim chief of police, Michael Goldman. This is dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. This is addressed to the former city clerk, Lynn Bouchard. I on behalf of the Leominster Police ask that eighty-four eighteen be passed. CGIS rules no longer allow out-of-state criminal history checks for non-criminal investigation purposes. Since a vast majority of transient vendor applicants are from out-of-state, this restriction hampers the police department from conducting proper background checks. A city ordinance such as that proposed will restore this ability. Very truly yours, Michael Goldman, interim chief of police. let me see if there were any other. I think the, um, the only other referral that we're waiting for is from the city solicitor's office. I would recommend further time, um, on this one. I, I think that given the, uh, constitutional implications, I'd like to get the blessing of the city solicitor. So my recommendation is further time.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation by committee eighty-four dash eighteen for further time. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to eighty-four dash eighteen. We'll now move on to page five, Legal Affairs, eighty-five dash eighteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition eighty-five dash eighteen, Greenbrier Realty Trust, request an easement over the parcel shown on the city of Leominster assessor's maps as map twelve, parcel five, as shown on a utility plan prepared by McCarty Engineering dated December sixteenth, two thousand and five, and revised June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to install four domestic water services and one hydrant service up, up, off the city-owned water main. We have referrals from the Building Commissioner, dated July of two thousand and eighteen. This is addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Members of the Legal Affairs Committee, I am in receipt of a communication dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, requesting my recommendation on petition eighty-five eighteen, requesting an easement over a parcel to install four domestic water services and one hydrant service off the city-owned water main. I am in favor of this request, as it was approved by the Planning Board several years ago. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Peter Nile, Building Commissioner. We also have a referral, a recommendation dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. This is from Raymond Racine, uh, the DPW Director. This is addressed to the former city clerk, Lynn Bouchard. Dear Lynn, the Leominster Department of Public Works has reviewed this request and offers the following comments. The applicant needs to submit an easement plan and a deed description of what is being asked to be given. These need to be suitable for recording at the Registry of Deeds. Please let us know if you have any questions. Sincerely, Raymond Racine. We also have a recommendation dated July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. This is addressed to Caitlin Huffman, city clerk. Dear Ms. Huffman, on behalf of the Fire Department, pursuant to your request for a recommendation on the above captioned petition, please be advised that I do not have any concerns in regards to the utility plan proposed. Please contact this office if you have any questions. Sincerely, Robert A. Sidlo, the second chief of the department. Let me just check to see if there are any other referrals. Yes, there's a referral dated July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, from the planning board. This is also addressed to Caitlin Huffman, the city clerk. Dear Ms. Huffman, at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning board voted unanimously to make a positive recommendation to the city council to approve with the DPW's comments. Sincerely, John Souza, chairman of the Leominster Planning Board. I understand that we have a we have a pending referral from the city solicitor, but I, I think that would really go to the form of the easement plan and the, in the legal description. So my recommendation at this point would be to grant petition eighty-five eighteen with the condition that the easement plan and legal description is approved by our city solicitor. And I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I'll poll, we'll poll the committee, go on to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
I disagree. I think the DPW has some concerns and I think we need to let them be addressed.
All set? I yield the floor to the third member, Counselor Bonanza.
Mr. Chairman, do we know whether there is an easement plan that's been prepared?
There's, there's one. I'm sorry, there was one that was submitted with the petition.
So presumably, DPW saw that?
I don't know if they saw, I don't know if they saw that. It was submitted. They did. Okay.
So they're suggesting it's not in recordable form?
That's what they're suggesting. But I think that even if it's not in a recordable form, I, I think that, my position is that something that Copeland and Page can take up. I mean, we're talking, we're really talking about an easement plan that just gives access for, you know, for fire hydrants and water. So my, my recommendation remains the same.
I'm okay with that, with the condition that you outlined.
I yield the floor back to the clerk.
No.
No.
I'm not supportive.
Okay. Counselor, qualify your recommendation, please.
The recommendation, the majority recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to approve petition eighty-five eighteen with the condition that the applicant submit an easement plan and legal description that is approved by Copeland and Page.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant eighty-five dash eighteen with a condition, upon approval, an easement plan and legal description qualified by the city solicitor. I'll yield the floor, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question through the chair to the Legal Affairs Chairperson. So if, if the easement isn't in recordable, isn't in a recordable state, I guess at this point, does that make more work for Copeland and Page?
No, I, I, I think it's more work for the applicant. Copeland and Page is going to have to review.
They have to review.
Regardless what they submit.
Right.
Yeah.
So the, just to qualify, the, the recommendation would be to grant. However, they have to submit those documents that you're stating in order for Copeland and Page to review them? So the city's not preparing them. They're preparing them and they have to be reviewed. We just haven't seen them at this point. Anything else?
I don't know. I'm having, I'm having a dilemma. Approving something that Copeland and Page hasn't said is in the proper form yet and we're approving something we haven't had our attorney say that it's in the proper recording form. I mean, I, I just don't.
It's, it's.
Counselor Bonanza, go ahead.
It's in the interest of the applicant to create a Mylar that can be recorded. They're not going anywhere without it. So I suspect very strongly that they're going to give a law firm, something that the law firm's going to say, okay, we can, we can convey on this. They're going to ask us to re-sign a deed. We can't sign a deed to a plan that doesn't exist and can't be recorded. So I, I agree with the chair, Chair of Legal Affairs. It's, it's just going to sort of work its way through the lawyer to lawyer. It'll just get done.
So the onus is on the applicant in order to submit those documents or it's not going to pass?
Won't happen.
Won't happen.
No, I guess I understand that, but we did refer to the city solicitor, so we're not going to wait for their recommendation. I mean, in some cases, we're waiting for a recommendation, other cases, we're not waiting for a recommendation. I'm just trying to sort that, sort through that, I guess, in my own head. When does it make sense? I mean, when do we proceed without a referral back from the city solicitor and when do we not?
If the DPW had had some other issue over and above the fact that the plan is in recordable form, then I would, I'd be more hesitant. But given that's the only thing they cited, and to me, it's sort of pro forma that they'll create it and Copeland and Page isn't going to sign the conveyance or allow the mayor to sign the conveyance until it happens. So I'm okay with it based on that. If there was something else, I would, I'd have a different opinion.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you still have the floor.
Thank you. As I read back through the DPW referral, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't object. It just says, I mean, it makes the case that these need to be submitted. They need to be suitable for recording. So thank you. Thank you.
You're good? Good question. Good question. Mr. Chairman, anything to add to it?
No, I just would concur with Counselor Badanza. I think, I think these items are largely ministerial.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor regarding eighty-five dash eighteen? Okay, this is just a majority vote. All those in favor of granting eighty-five dash eighteen with the condition that the proper documents for easement and also for, what was the last second piece?
Legal description.
Legal description is presented to the city solicitor accordingly.
Presented and approved.
And approved by the city solicitor.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those approved, those opposed by a vote of eight to one. It is granted. Thank you. Can we, Madam Clerk, can we all get a copy of the final description of how this was taken tonight so we can follow up on it as well? All right? Okay, thank you. And then whatever goes to the city solicitor, we'd like a copy of that. So if you can ask the applicant to provide you with one? Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Communication One. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication One, Mayor Dean J. Mazzarella requests that the city council approve petition C dash oh one and authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation substantially in the form as set forth below relating to the city making payment on a certain unpaid bill to Royal Steam Heater Company, provided, however, that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court and provided further that the mayor is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. We have pinned, we have several pending referrals, the mayor's office, the city solicitor, purchasing department, the school department and the comptroller. Given those circumstances, I would request further time.
Further time. Thank you. Any committee input on that? All set? All set?
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation for further time on Communication One. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, if not, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to Communication One. Mr. Chairman, petition one dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr.
Excuse me, dash nineteen, are you ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. Petition one nineteen, Janet L. Scherer-Poltney and ten registered voters request speed bumps to be installed on Burridge Avenue. We do have, there was a petition presented along with signatures of ten registered voters. We do have some recommendations. I'm sorry, we have a recommendation dated July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, and this is from the DPW. This is addressed to the Legal Affairs Committee. Dear committee members, in regards to petition one dash nineteen, the Department of Public Works has the following responses regarding the installation of speed bumps. Number one, it is the policy of the DPW to not install speed bumps within the right-of-way of the city of Leominster. Number two, they are a hindrance to snow plowing operations and create potential damage to snow plowing equipment. Number three, they create, they create areas of the roadway where snow is not removed and icy conditions persist. Number four, during the winter snow events, time is of the essence to clear roadways. The introduction of speed bumps along city streets will slow down snow plowing operations. Number five, over time, the speed bump will need constant maintenance from deterioration from snow plowing operations. Number six, they prevent the roadway from draining properly, which would in turn require additional storm drainage structures to be installed. Number seven, they are impediments to bicyclists, pedestrians and are not handicap accessible. Number eight, motorists end up trying to drive their vehicles around speed bumps. Therefore, it is our recommendation that speed bumps are not installed on Burridge Avenue. Please call me if you have any further questions. Sincerely, Mark Piermarini, P E, Assistant Director of Public Works. We also have a recommendation from Lieutenant Richard Kinney, the traffic agent from the Leominster Police Department. This is addressed, it's undated, it's addressed to the city clerk. This correspondence is in reference to petition one dash nineteen, which is a request to place speed bumps on Burridge Avenue. The police department is opposed to placing speed bumps on Burridge Avenue. Burridge Avenue is a thickly settled roadway in the city of Leominster. The road does not have a posted speed limit. Therefore, as a thickly settled area, the speed limit by law is set at thirty miles per hour. The traffic unit conducted a speed study on Burridge Avenue that started on July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen at one P M. and ended on July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen at seven A M. During this timeframe, sixteen hundred one cars were recorded traveling on Burridge Avenue. The daily average was four hundred thirty-one vehicles a day. Eighty-five percent of these vehicles were recorded traveling thirty miles per hour or under. Two vehicles were recorded traveling between forty-one and forty-five miles per hour. No vehicles were recorded traveling faster than forty-five miles per hour. At this time, the data shows that this is not a speeding problem on Burridge Avenue. The manual on uniform traffic control devices is silent on speed bumps. The purpose of a speed bump obviously is to slow traffic. Studies have shown speed bumps will reduce vehicle speed to the fifteen to twenty mile per hour range. Burridge Avenue is a thirty mile per hour zone and with the majority of vehicle speeds being at or below the speed limit, there is no reason to attempt to lower speeds any further. Studies have also shown speed bumps reduce response time of emergency vehicles, especially that of ambulances with patients. Speed bumps have been found to increase noise levels in the area of the bumps. Speed bumps also affect snow plowing. For all of the above reasons, the Leominster Police Department is opposed to the placement of speed bumps on Burridge Avenue. We also have a recommendation from the mayor, Dean J. Mazzarella, dated August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. This is a letter to the city council as a whole. Dear members of the city council, I should note the mayor addresses several other petitions in here. In reference to petition one dash nineteen, speed bumps to be installed on Burridge Avenue. I am in favor of the petition with the following conditions. All neighbors agree to the petition. In the past, we, we have been asked to place speed bumps and then later had them removed. The funding would need to be appropriated. In addition, we would need to have proper site distances as well as meet other design areas required by both the DPW and the police department. Let me see if there's any other. Okay. So I, I know, I know that the agenda indicates that we're missing a couple of referrals, but I think the only one we're missing is from the city solicitor. My, my opinion, you know, and I, and I understand that, I understand the neighbors' concerns, but my opinion is that I, I have to weigh in favor of the DPW and the police department. So my, my recommendation is to deny petition one nineteen. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
I would agree.
Third member, Counselor Bonanza.
Yeah, I would agree. And in addition to that, we're only part of the equation. I mean, even if we approve this, there's no guarantee any money's going to get appropriated for it. So I would agree with my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to deny petition one dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right for denial of one dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. Through the chair to the ward four counsel, you're right, the money would have to be appropriated and that's something I think that the mayor acknowledges in his recommendation. I do, however, I know that area, I know that street, it's terrible. I mean, it's, and sightlines are a big, big problem over there. So I think the mayor's recommendation, you know, the funding would need to be appropriated. In addition, we would need to have proper sight distances as well as meet other design areas required by both DPW and the police department. I, I, my recommendation would be to see what we could do according to the mayor's recommendation. I, you know, people that have speeding problems or perceive that there's a speeding problem in the neighborhood, it's really hard for them who live there, people who live there, people who have little kids that are playing there and who know that street intimately well because they're up and down it every single day going in and out of that neighborhood. So I, I don't agree that we should deny it. I think that maybe we could try to work with the mayor, try to work with the DPW and the police department to see if there are other ways. I understand speed bumps, people don't like speed bumps. They do pose, you know, difficulty for snow plows and whatnot, but there needs to be a way that the city can be responsive to people who perceive speeding in their neighborhood. How can we slow traffic down? It's a public safety issue and, and I know that these neighbors were very concerned about it when they came down here. So that would be, that would be my opinion is, you know, is there something that we can do to design something that would slow traffic down? You know, we could come up with something or the DPW could come up with a proposal in order to satisfy these neighbors. So that's, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Feckley, do you want to weigh in?
I do. I mean, I sympathize with the neighbors. I know that it's a cutoff road. I think that the volume of the traffic is more than most side roads, you know, have to put up with. As far as the speed, maybe perhaps we could, you know, one of us, maybe I would put in a petition to have the speed lowered. It's, there's also the issue of coming off of Main Street, trying to cut in front of the traffic as fast as you possibly can and then whizzing down the hill. That's right there as soon as you come off of Main Street. Perhaps something could be done about the design of that hill. I, I'm not sure, that's not my, you know, area of expertise, but we could look into something like that. Speed bumps, I don't think would be the answer for obvious reasons, you know, the DPW has cited. There is a water concern there, too. They've had a lot of flooding, so I think speed bumps, if they do cause issues with flooding, that would make it even worse situation. But I do believe that something has to be done. I think that this is one street in North Leominster that really suffers from the traffic. And if we could get petition to lower the, the speed limit, that would help. And other, and I agree with the counselor to my left that maybe we could work with the DPW to see if there's something else we could do to calm traffic down. You know, maybe, I know that one-way streets are not popular with anybody and I don't think they would, it would even be popular with the neighbors. But things that we could talk to the DPW and the police about to try to give these people some relief because it's a real problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Counselor Bonanza?
Yeah, I don't disagree with the ward one counsel that it clearly is a cut-through road. I can remember years ago, I think when I was city solicitor, that then ward one counselor proposed, I think, a one-way street there, which met with a bunch of controversy as well. So maybe lowering the speed limit is a, now that we have the authority to do that, maybe that is a way to, to look at it.
I'll make a promise to, to put in a petition for that, for the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Frida?
I could be wrong, but didn't we have speed bumps there at one time?
Round the corner.
Mary Jane Simmons.
They've been there for literally decades.
Mary Jane Simmons was involved in it.
There are.
There they are now.
And then they were put on Day Street and that was a disaster. And then they were put on Day Street, and that was a disaster. I mean, we all know something's got to be done on a lot of these streets. I mean, I think we need to set a policy for the city, because if we were to put speed bumps here, we're all going to get fifty calls tomorrow and putting them somewhere else. So, I mean, everything we do down here is going to make, say, well, if they got them, why can't I get them? So, I mean, a lot of the speeding's an issue, we know that. So I think we need to look at a policy rather than do something individually.
Any other comments? Councilor Ottinger?
You know, having lived near that near area for a few months while I was waiting for my house to be built, and walking that street, speeding is a problem. They may only be going thirty miles an hour, but when you come off of Main Street and hit that hill, you don't know what's down below the hill. So it's really a serious issue. And I would certainly support a petition to lower the speed limit to twenty miles an hour or something like that, because if people are following the speed limit generally now, we would expect that they'd probably follow it if it was twenty miles an hour, well-posted. So I think we need to deny this and, you know, move forward with something else.
This is a soft approach to denial. That's leave to withdraw without prejudice. I'll yield the floor back to the chair for consideration on that. You know, if I may, it was great that the neighborhood brought this out, no question, and it's something, as Councilor Frida indicated, should be a citywide attack, and Councilor Shalfo Zephyr hit it, you hit it also as a Ward Councillor. We all feel the same pains. So maybe, you know, this is something people can work on and submit collectively. So, Mr. Chairman, your recommendation?
I certainly don't have a problem with recommending leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Any objection from the council? Okay, thank you. Councilor, the recommendation for leave to withdraw without prejudice on 1-19, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, 1-19 has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice, and Councilor Feckley, we're all behind you, whatever we can do to help. We'll now move on to public safety and traffic, beginning with 72-18. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, if there's no objection, I'd like to take 72-18 through 78-18 and block.
Okay, we're just going to have to be dealing with hearings, correct?
No.
Not at this point? Okay, very good. Any objection to that? Okay, so 72 through 74, Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
Okay, 72-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number ten on Independence Drive. 73-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number twelve on Independent, sorry, on Bicentennial Avenue. 74-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number four on Flintlock Drive. 75-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number five on Bicentennial Avenue. 76-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number two on Drummer Lane. 77-18, David R. Cormier, install a streetlight on pole number four on Indian Ridge Drive. 78-18, David R. Cormier, request to install a streetlight on pole number two on Bicentennial Avenue. At this time, I'm going to ask that these be tabled for study. I think eventually, if they go anywhere, there's going to be a financial piece with them, and I'm going to work with the mayor on that. They are accepted streets. There is nothing that indicates that there cannot be lights on the street. We got the go-ahead from the planning board and whatnot, but I think I got to do some more work with the mayor on this to get some kind of funding in place. So I'll check with my committee, and I'll ask that we table them for study.
Okay, I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Councilor Feckley.
I agree.
The third member, Councilor Dobrowski?
I agree.
Please qualify.
Okay, so it's a unanimous recommendation that we give 72-18 through 78-18 table for study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, the recommendation read to table Petition 72-18 through 78-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Through the chair to the Ward Three Councillor, I hope you bring those back soon because I saw the price tag, forty-two hundred dollars, and that's kind of a drop in the bucket when you consider the kind of money that the city is putting away in savings. And that's a public safety issue, again, streetlights on those streets. It's a really dark, dark neighborhood with some tough corners. So, yeah, I hope to see you back soon.
Yeah, I agree. I'm going to do my best to move as quickly as possible. We got a couple of other things going on, and then we'll come right back to this as well, so thank you.
Very good, excellent. Any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of tabling 72-18 through 78-18, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, they have been tabled. We'll now move on to Ways and Means. We have some appointments. The first one was already confirmed. We'll move on to the second appointment. Madam Chair, you ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, and actually, I could take these all in block as well, if there's no objection.
Is there any objection to that? Ways and Means Committee, good. Go for it.
A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Charlie Williams to the position of auxiliary officer term to expire July 17, 2019. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Paul Topolsky to the position of auxiliary officer term to expire July 17, 2019. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of John J. Karen to the position of auxiliary officer term to expire July 17, 2019. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Lims Octavius to the position of auxiliary officer term to expire July 17, 2019. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Daniel Johnson to the position of auxiliary officer term to expire July 17, 2019. These names have come before us on a regular basis the past few years under my chairmanship of Ways and Means. We're familiar with these individuals. They're faithful servants to the city of Lomester, so my recommendation would be to grant the reappointment of these individuals to the positions of auxiliary officer, and I should poll my committee.
I yield the floor to the second member, Councilor Frida.
I support them. The one thing I think we need, I had asked before, that we get an attendance, because a lot of these, so many of these boards are just not showing up, and they don't have quorums, and, you know, that's part of the emergency management, it's important. So if people are just getting to get their name on and move up the ladder and not show up when they need them.
I agree.
I think it's important to know.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. And the third member, Councilor Dobrowski?
I agree.
Thank you. Please qualify, Madam Chair.
Yes, we have a unanimous recommendation for the reappointment of Charlie Williams, Paul Topolsky, John J. Karen, Lims Octavius, and Daniel Johnson to the positions of auxiliary officers term to expire July 17, 2019.
Thank you. Councilor, the recommendation for confirmation on said candidates. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll-call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councilor Feckley.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I should record as yay, by a vote of nine to nothing, confirmations have taken place. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to old business on page seven. We have a second reading of the ordinance before Legal Affairs. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. This is Legal Affairs Petition 40-18, Second Reading of an Ordinance Relative to Amending Article 18, Section 22-105 of the Lomester Zoning Ordinance to Include Language Regarding Recreational Marijuana Facilities. My position is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I yield the floor to Councilor Frida, the clerk?
No.
Negative?
Negative.
And the third member, Councilor Bonanza?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman, please qualify.
The majority recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, a formerly Legal Affairs Petition 40-18. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Whoops, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to be brief. I have voted no on this petition previously in its various incarnations, and I will vote no again this evening. I understand the rationale that some of the councillors have laid out here, you know, to get it zoned in industrial. I agree that some industrial locations are appropriate. However, I feel very strongly that there are other industrial locations that are not. So that's why I will not be supporting this zoning ordinance this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Bonanza?
Yeah, this is the culmination of almost a year's worth of work. You know, there's a lot of opinions about this in the community, yea and nay. I think it represents really the best option we have under all the circumstances. A lot of us have our questions about this. I think this is a proactive way to deal with the issue. I think it's appropriate to get something on the books. Zoning, as we know, is a living ordinance or a living law. I mean, it doesn't mean it can't be changed or tinkered with in the future, but at least we'll have something in place to protect the community and move forward with something that will at least provide special permit also, protections in the industrial zone, and give us something that the community can have in place and be proactive about this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll-call vote. Again, it will require a two-thirds vote, so we're looking at six votes in order to be confirmed. Begin the vote with Councilor Frida.
Nay.
Councilor Frida is nay. Councilor Dobrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski is yea. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr is nay. Councilor Feckley?
Nay.
Councilor Feckley is nay. Councilor Bonanza?
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza is yea. Councilor Ottinger?
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger is yea. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier is yea. Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier is yea, and I, Richard Marchand, am also a yea. So the vote passes six to three, thank you. We'll now move on to, on a lighter note, are you enjoying the packets that they're preparing for you? Does it help a little bit?
Yes, absolutely.
Good. Listen, on that, if I just may, we're working really hard to bring their initiatives into the council. If there's any criticism you have constructive, please share it with them. Even in the structure of the, you know, the draft that you saw to make it a little more user-friendly, they polled the clerk and assistant clerk of polling, the people who are CC'd the agenda every week because there's a mailing involved, so we're trying to save a little money. We potentially might just do it electronically. The rule says right now, we mail it to them, and I did, Shaleen Obershon called me tonight. She was very pleased to get the agenda, you know, so a lot of good things happening to try to make things a little easier and user-friendly for the council as well. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
No, I just wanted to comment, it's been a little bit of an adjustment, you know, with the double side and everything, but it's great to have the referrals right on the back, attached to the petition, and particularly, it's very helpful to have what's outstanding in terms of referrals, you know, what we have and what we don't. So, no, thank you, the changes are very, very well done.
Great. I'll bring it right back to the 25th silver anniversary of the Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival. Lot of planning happening, as you see, a lot of social media type of things happening. We're very pleased to say that the event's been extended one more hour this year, so we're going to go from three to nine instead of three to five. The music's going to be wonderful. We start the day off with the LHS Chorus. We have the Lomester Jazz Band. Rachel Sully's going to be singing a couple of Disney songs. We have the Fallbrook Song Burns. We also have the International Veterans Corps, who are really, I mean, they're just fantastic. It's really sad, as I'm looking back at pictures, seeing so many people that have passed on, people like Victor Ledger, and, you know, so many of them, Gil Tremly, friend of the library for so long, Spud Kelly, a ton of blues, he'll be performing at 12 Sharp. So they'll be performing, as you know, they're renowned all over the area. We have Bob Healy with his swing band. We're going to have something else happening at the end of the day. We also have DJ Ray Richard and DJ Earl that'll be performing in the parking lot party and also in the park itself. Major advertising, we're going to be working with the Sentinel, we want to work with the Champion. We also signed a contract with WXLO, so I'm waiting to put the school kids together for that. They're actually going to make the advertisements, and life skill kids, too, so it's pretty cool. So we're trying our best to include them as much as possible. LTV's been wonderful, we're going to do some things. So, you know, social media, and then the school district, we will have English and Spanish, you know, so we can share with all the kids district-wide the information to take home about the festival for their parents. We'll have 120 vendors. Ginny's has been with us, I think, 25 years, so at least 25 years. The Rotary Club's probably been there as much as well, you know, so we look forward to them participating, along with, we went from about 20% nonprofit to 90, we're about 90% nonprofit right now, and that's exactly where we want to be. And we couldn't do that without the help of the sponsors. We have a woman who actually sets up in an ice cream location every week, and will be doing the Pennington pony rides this year. We have the parking lot for children, and it's a 10-day all-day pass, and we give more out than we collect. It's just a great day for the kids up there. It's all supervised by the high school band, the theater arts program. This year, we're doing the Pumpkins for a Cause, and some of the kids thought that they'd spearhead this. We have 500 pumpkins currently being grown in the heart of Amish country, in their medium-sized with long stems, so they're pretty unique, and we're going to be picking them up the week of the festival. And what will happen is between some of the student leaders at the high school and the life skill students, working with them, and best buddies that just came back from their national conference, they'll be working with all the little kids, painting them, so we're just trying to figure out how to put the paint on where it doesn't come off on their shirt as it did a few years back. Caught some hell for that, let me tell you. So we'll be doing that up there. So we have some great sponsors right now, Lomester Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, Rollstone Bank, Lomester Cultural Commission, Governor, excuse me, Congressman McGovern, the Enterprise Bank, Longstone Limited, which used to be Gagni Enterprises, Viola Walton, North America, always there for us, Health Alliance, the Careless Insurance Agency, Richardson Funeral Home. The Commonwealth, as you know, has provided some grant money for the city. We don't know how that's going to play out yet, but, you know, we're not counting on it at this point, but we hope it comes to fruition as far as have it ready for the festival so we can actually use it. Outside of that, we're still looking for sponsors, we're still looking for vendors, you know, if you can get involved with it, if you like to get involved with it, if you're a nonprofit or charitable organization, it's a regional thing, not just Lomester. It's a big celebration. Potentially, we're working right now on a Sunday afternoon concert in City Hall at 2:00. The last time we tried this was actually when Ginny retired, and we did a concert the night, and everybody was exhausted, so we didn't have a big turnout, but it happened. You know, so the beneficiary was Ginny's food pantry, and, you know, there was some kind, you know, generosity that just was extended to the new shift of management there for the most part after Ginny moved on. So this year, we're looking to do something for the veterans, so I'm hoping that they can pull this off. They're working with Jolene right now and a few veterans in town, and hopefully, we're going to have a nice concert for them. It'll be free, there'll be free food, just a family event, so that'll be happening Sunday afternoon or two, okay? So lots of ideas, the Rotary Club, what are you doing this year, clam chowder again? All right, so get ready for the clam chowder. Hopefully, it won't be 100 degrees out, you know, so, but it's always really good, so thank you. We're going to have a pie contest, too, so we're bringing that back, if anybody would like to be a judge, but I caution you, the last time I did this, I was in trouble for three days. I took two bigger bites. We had 68 pies, and I fell in love with the first one, and I was dead by the time I got to the last bite, you know, but that went back to the fifth annual, it's been that long, so if you'd like to get involved, help, please do, we need your help, okay? And then I got an update today on transportation. It's been a disaster for the school department as far as sending communications to me. There's been some communication issues in the building here with the internet, so I did get a text message from Paula Deacon. I did keep it on my laptop if you want me to read it, but I just want to summarize it. Again, she's thanking, you know, us for our participation in, to participation in the budget, and last year's busing plan is being implemented, so no one has to really worry right now, everything's in place, and I guess the publication of it will be happening And I guess the publication of it will be happening within the next week or so, okay? So if there's any questions on that, that's the superintendent, Paula Deacon. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. Anything else on the old business? Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. To the chair, to the finance chairman, CO-9 is $323,000 for police vehicles. I know that the interim police chief attached a little bit of information about that, but could we get more detail? Could we get a roster of the cars that they actually want to purchase with prices?
Yeah.
Because there's a variety of cars. It's not just all cruisers, I think.
All right. I'll get some more detail on that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, counselor?
No.
Okay. Counselor Dobrowski, you were next. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just need to schedule a subcommittee meeting on particularly petition 219 and request a vote to bring the interim police chief and the building inspector to the meeting.
And what's the date you'd like to set that up?
I just need to make sure my fellow committee members can make it. I know we have a lot of second reading of the ordinances coming up, so I don't know if we can do it on the next meeting, maybe on an off night. I don't know, Tuesday, August 21st, is that good?
It's okay with me.
That's not good? Tuesday, Wednesday, August 22nd?
Not going to be your whole week.
Oh, that whole week, okay. So what can I... Monday, well, what time are we going to have the council meeting on the 27th?
Well, that's to be, I mean, we could delay the proposal. It would be a regular scheduled time, 7:30, if that would help you.
Well, I could be here on the 27th at 5:30. I don't know if that works. Does that work for you?
5:30?
Yep. And if we could take a quick vote to bring those gentlemen down.
Okay, that's going to be on the 27th?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll establish the Subcommittee for Legal Affairs on the 27th at 5:30 PM in the council chambers, and we have a vote, a proposed vote.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We just, Counselor Feckley's the author of the petition. I just want to make sure she can make it at 5:30.
Oh, good, good. Okay, good. Okay, so we want to bring down the police chief and building inspector, so we'll have a vote on that. All who's in favor of asking them to come to that meeting, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, very good, we'll invite them to come down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or a representative, if they're not available from the department, just in case.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, anything else, counselor?
No.
Okay, Council Frida?
Just to go back or forward, either way, on the request for the police station site, and I wish Mr. Zimmerman was still here because his questions regarding the assessed value and the sentinel article pretty much, I think, was confusing as well, and it led people to think that we were overpaying for the property. Assessed values in the assessor's office for taxation is the compilation of the last three years. We all know what happened in the last six or seven months, and these appraisals were done, and it's not, it's real time. So the values are definitely different. It's not that they're overpaying for the assessed value, they're paying for what the property's worth today. So it's important for people to realize we're not overpaying for the properties.
That's a great point. And, you know, I think that's something Mr. Mitchell can address when he comes down here. Okay, good, good point. So I think, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns, we'll be looking forward to that information. Okay. Anything else on the old business? Okay, I'm going to take a step back. We're going to go back to Communication 6. And because there is going to be a loan order involved with this, we need to also refer this to the chairman of finance or the finance committee. Right now, it's before Legal Affairs.
Are you on to new business?
Old business. Old business.
Okay, it's listed under new.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the hearing thinking that was the agenda. Okay, actually, no.
First, we're reading, we've already had the reading, so we can get a couple of hearing requirements and then get our second reading.
Yeah.
So we can get the closing, that moving about.
Okay, when do you propose we do this at the end?
It would be the underneath business.
Okay, we'll do that in the new business. Okay, just a step ahead, I'm sorry. Okay, anything else on the old business? Okay, very good. We'll move on to new business. We have an election order. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. We have the election order, and it reads that meeting of the citizens of this city qualified to vote in the state primaries shall be held on Tuesday, the 4th day of September 2018, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of casting their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress for the Commonwealth, Governor for this Commonwealth, Lieutenant Governor for this Commonwealth, Attorney General for this Commonwealth, Secretary of State for this Commonwealth, Treasurer and Receiver General for this Commonwealth, Auditor for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress, Third District, Counselor, Seventh District, Senator and General Court, Worcester and Middlesex District, Representative and General Court, Second Worcester District, District Attorney, Middle District, Register of Deeds, Worcester District, Clerk of Courts, Worcester District. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the city council. Ward 1, Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way; Ward 1, Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way; Ward 1, Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way; Ward 2, Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viscloide Avenue; Ward 2, Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viscloide Avenue; Ward 2, Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Viscloide Avenue; Ward 3, Precinct A, Fraternal Order of the Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street; Ward 3, Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street; Ward 3, Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street; Ward 4, Precinct A, Senior Citizens Drop and Center, 5 Pond Street; Ward 4, Precinct B, Lumister Veteran Center, 100 West Street; Ward 4, Precinct C, Lumister Veteran Center, 100 West Street; Ward 5, Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street; Ward 5, Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street; Ward 5, Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Lumister, 23 West Street. Here I fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting today.
I refer this election order to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Well, I was relieved because I thought I was going to have to read this.
But I did you a favor, I thought.
The clerk did a wonderful job. All right, so I'm...
Would you like to do some of Counsel Cormier's streetlights?
Yeah, sure. So this, would this be regular course or is this something we're going to be?
We're going to vote on it tonight.
We're going to vote on it tonight, okay? So, yeah, so I would say that the, or recommend that the council approve the state primary order for September 4th, 2018.
Thank you.
As read by the city clerk.
Thank you. Counselors, are the recommendations read? Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, Counselor Ottinger.
I'm sorry, Representative in the General Court, the Second Worcester District, my law, but I probably the third representative.
Yeah, it does, for sure.
I copied and pasted from the state, so I can get it.
Fourth with, Fitchburg's the third with the fourth.
With the fourth.
That's a great catch. David, thank you. So that would be for Representative Congress would be amended to fourth?
Yes.
And there was another one?
No, no, not Representative. Representative in the General Court would be the fourth of Worcester District.
And the General Court is the fourth, not the second.
Okay.
That's the only amendment?
That's the only one, yes.
Was Congress, did you say Third District to Congress?
Yes.
Should be second.
Yeah, Third District, Fitchburg.
See, you ladies have to move to Lumister with your thinking. You're still out of cock and you're a god. That's what's happening here.
I copied and pasted from the state sample.
There you go, okay. Nice catch. Yeah, that could have been a little problem for voters. One second, let's get, you want to add something to that, Counselor?
Yeah, the district attorney is Middle District.
Okay, so district attorney.
That's what it says.
That's right.
Middle.
That's what it is?
That's what it says.
That's what it says, is that what it is?
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And also too, just, you know, we might want to clarify, Register of Deeds is Worcester North District?
Yeah, that's true too.
So Register of Deeds, Worcester North. Okay. So do you need to make adjustments where the council will stop in tomorrow and sign for you?
Yes, please.
Can we all do that, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Make it a four, okay?
Yep.
I know you're all busy, but this will be good. Okay, so we have several amendments to what we read. The Representative in Congress is the Second District. The Representative in General Court is in the Fourth District. And the Registry of Deeds is in Worcester North District, and they're all coming to the JA Festival. It's going to be one of those. And then some.
Right.
It's unbelievable. Probably three or four of our contacts in us, so, oh my goodness. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Great catch. Champion, thank you very much.
Shouldn't we vote the amendment and then the order?
Need to revoke the amendments.
We're going to go for it right now. So all those, you want to make the motion for the amendment?
I make a motion that we make the following amendments. Representative Congress, Second District, Representative General Court, Fourth Worcester District, and Register of Deeds, Worcester North District.
Excellent. Have seconded by Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, it is amended. Does the chairwoman have a report?
I do. Mr. President, we have unanimous vote that the state primary order would be amended, and as amended, I would recommend that it be granted.
Thank you. Counselors, are the recommendation read to grant the election order? Are there any questions or comments? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
By a vote of nine to nothing, the election order has been confirmed. Thank you. Okay.
That's going to be our first reading for the CO-6, so it gets in for the first time.
Okay, so would you do that right now?
Yeah, and then we'll adjust it down, finance and legal.
Okay, all right. So we're now going to deal with Communication 6. It is for the special meeting. This was with originally Chairman of Legal Affairs, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, are we going to join it up right now with finance? Okay, so this is going to be jointly referred.
Okay.
Okay, I'll begin with the recommendation from Legal Affairs first.
The recommendation is further time, I believe, correct? Or is there a special meeting scheduled?
Regular.
So it was asked by the mayor and Bill Mitchell that we read it for the first time tonight on the agenda so it can get through the process the right way.
Okay.
By the end of the sale.
Okay. So Communication 6, number one, relative to the acquisition of three parcels of land, 106 Central Street, 112 Central Street, and 124 Central Street. Number two, also relative to the appropriation of $2 million for the cost of the foregoing acquisition and development of the property for police station purposes. Number three, relative to any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of project costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. Recommendation is further time, and were we trying to schedule a special meeting or is this just going for the regular course?
We'd like to schedule the meeting officially for the public for September 6th, and that would be the public hearing as well.
Okay, so...
That gives us a window of, in case there's any delay, to be able to wrap it up in the timely fashion necessary. That's what we have in the meeting.
Okay.
In case there's any hiccup, some great questions that were raised already, want to make sure these are all covered.
So on behalf of, at least as Chairman of Legal Affairs, I don't have a problem with that date and time.
Okay.
So September 6, 2018.
Yeah. And on C-06, it remains...
I'm not sure what you're asking.
We looking for further time on this still?
Regular course.
Or regular course?
Regular course.
Regular course.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Now I'll refer to the Finance Committee for confirmation on their position.
Same recommendation, regular course and special meeting 9/6.
Perfect, okay. So regular course has been awarded to C-06. It will be dealt with in a special meeting on September 6th, and we have a time for that?
6:30 PM.
Okay, 6:30 PM. So keep in mind, if you need any other subcommittee meetings, that might be the night we're getting together, so, okay, thank you.
Can I just point a order, Mr. President?
Sure, please.
We gave it regular course earlier. Are you sure the mayor's not asking for us to give it further time at this point? I don't, I don't know, but...
Okay, let me ask you a question. Give us one second, okay?
Sure, yep.
Did we just put it on, just to share that with them, special meeting, and that's what it was going to be? So we're not really, it's a reading for the first time.
Okay.
And then it's over, so we said regular course, okay. So the process is appropriate, just to get that in there for the reading.
Okay.
And to go regular course with it is okay.
Okay.
We wanted to be, also join up with finance and also let the public know on this. I believe we're all set on that.
Okay.
Through the office. The clerk seems to feel comfortable.
We had legal counsel.
Okay, so, yeah, we did consult on that.
Okay.
I understand the question.
Yeah, so I'm fine.
No, you're, okay, very good. Okay, so we have further ti, excuse me, further time, correct? On, no, regular, was it regular course? I'm sorry. It's been a long day. C-06 with regular course, jointly agreed upon with finance and also Legal Affairs, and we have a hearing scheduled for?
September 6, 2018, at 6:30 PM.
Okay, very good. We're all set?
We've satisfied the first reading requirement.
Yeah. Okay.
Tonight.
Any questions or comments? If not, others in favor of establishing the hearing timing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing has been established, regular course, thank you. We now move on to the ordinance, first reading of an ordinance. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, first reading of an ordinance, relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Lumister as follows. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 13-17 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following. Sawtell Road against eastbound drivers at Central Street. My position is to, reading of the ordinance, and we need to schedule a public hearing on the second reading of the ordinance. And I'm open to a date and time from the Clerk's office for that.
Madam Clerk?
I would recommend September 10th meeting because at the 8:27 meeting, we have the public information session for borrowing along with some other items from the Mayor's office. And then we already have the subcommittee meeting before that.
And what time?
That would be at?
6 something.
Yes.
If we move the date of the time.
Then 6:30.
Okay.
6:30 PM.
Okay.
Okay.
So we just need to vote on the hearing, on the hearing for the second reading of the ordinance. And the suggested date and time is September 10th, 2018, at 6:30.
Counselors heard the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on September 10th at 6:30 PM in the Council Chambers. Any comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Freedom.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading is adopted. We've established a hearing on September 10th at 6:30 PM in the Council Chambers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to the back page. We have another first reading of an ordinance. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 1317 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following. Litchfield Street against northbound drivers at Lancaster Street. My position is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a hearing for the second reading of the ordinance, September 10th, 2018, at 6:32.
32.
Thirty, all right.
Okay.
I was going to say 31.
Could you, could you get through a hearing in one minute? I don't know.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's true.
You just keep going. I mean, you can always do them late, you can't do them early.
If there's no objection to that, I agree. Make a nice effect, 6:31.
6:31.
Okay. See how fast you can read that.
You don't have to.
Okay. Counselors heard the recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on September 10th, 6:31 PM in the Council Chambers. Are there any comments or questions? If not, again, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Freedom.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, are you ready for the next one?
I am. First reading of an ordinance, relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 1317 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following. Tossie Street against eastbound drivers at Central Street. My position is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, establish a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for September 10th, 2018, at 6:32 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read to grant, to, excuse me, to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on September 10th at 6:32 PM in the Council Chambers. Are there any comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Freedom.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted, thank you. We'll now move on to the next first reading. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 1317 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following. Columbus Street against westbound drivers at Litchfield Street. Similarly, my position is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for 9, September 10th, 2018, at 6:33 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on September 10th at 6:33 PM in the Council Chambers. Are there any comments or questions? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Freedom.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. Our hearing is scheduled for September 10th, 6:33 PM in the Council Chambers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you ready to report on the next ordinance?
I am, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, relative to an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Section 1317 of the revised ordinances entitled Stop Signs is hereby amended by inserting the following. Columbus Street against eastbound drivers at Ruth Street. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and schedule a public hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for September 10th, 2018, at 6:34 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and establish a hearing on September 10th at 6:34 PM in the Council Chambers. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those, we're going to do a roll call on this one, beginning with Counsel Freedom.
Yay.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Schelfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall record a j by a vote of nine to nothing. The first reading has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Could you imagine the headline in the Champion if we had the petition for zoning marijuana against the moratorium for marijuana with a one-minute window for public response? That would be great. That would definitely make national news, there's no question. Okay, thank you. Anything else under that? Okay, we're good. So, let's talk about the meeting time. It was suggested, thank you, that we move it to 7 o'clock instead of 7:30?
7:00 AM.
Yeah, you know? We've done this before. One time, I think it was 8:00.
8:00.
8:00, we moved it to 7:30. So just so you can get, people can get home at a reasonable amount of time, you know? But it's really up to you guys. Counsel Bonanza, you have the floor.
This was my brainchild.
You go, baby.
All right, so what, my, my thought process with this is that, once in a while, fortunately, we have a meeting with no hearings or just a few perfunctory hearings. And when that occurs, a 7:30 start time seems to me late. So if we start at 7:00, we all save a half an hour on the other end of the meeting. When we have a meeting that has a number of hearings or something complex or lengthy with a lot of public comment, my view is it doesn't matter. Because almost always, we end up recessing, starting the meeting, I'm sorry, starting the meeting, recessing, and going back to the hearings. So in those type of meetings, it makes no difference. The only issue is what the ultimate start time is when we have a number of hearings or complicated matters, which is really within our control.
Right.
Because sometimes we start meetings, we've started meetings as early as 5 for hearings when, you know, when we've had a lot on the agenda, a bunch of things grouped together. I'm not suggesting we, you know, we make the meetings any earlier when we have hearings. It just helps us in those meetings really when we have nothing for hearings or something that's just perfunctory. So I thought it was a good idea to get us out earlier on those nights. And on the nights when it doesn't work that way, it won't make any difference, really.
Counsel Cormier.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, but I just don't want to be put in a situation where, you know, we're going to start our meetings at 7:00. And so that means we're going to, you know, start having hearings at 4:30.
Right.
I mean, we need to.
I agree.
No earlier than 6 o'clock to start our business down here, no matter what the agenda's like. And, you know, I don't think that this is something we can really just do in a whim. Our meeting times are set by ordinance. Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-16. The times of our meetings are done by ordinance. Somebody needs to petition this and it needs to have a, you know, we need to vote on it. He's got a first reading, second reading, it's in our ordinance book.
Clerk, can the clerk respond to that?
He has corrected it's in our ordinance book.
Okay, so we would have to file a petition?
I, I can do that tomorrow, it's just, I didn't want to do it. If there was going to be a difficulty with it, if people generally felt it made some sense, I'll do it.